The place is the Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, 46312. This is also being shown via live stream at www.scec.k12.in.us. This is the meeting of the School Board and public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporation business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Present. Now, will we please stand for the Pledge Allegiance? "To the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." We have our mission statement from Dr. Burney.
Good evening, School Board. It is with great pleasure that I read the mission statement for our new 2025-2030 Strategic Plan. "The school city of East Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated practices to ensure success in life, college, career, and civic engagement."
Thank you. Now, approve of the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by trustee Smith.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
I believe there were some items that were going to be removed for maybe turn here. Can I address that?
Yes, I think we're going to address that a little bit later on in the agenda, and I'm going to recommend that they be tabled as opposed to you removing them. But I'll give that overview when we get to it.
Okay, then, thank you.
I'm good.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Taylor.
I would like to make a motion to table item 6.11.
6.11?
I'll second that motion.
Can I make a recommendation on that?
Sure.
Right now, there's a motion and a second on the floor to just approve the agenda.
Right.
Let's vote on that, approve it. In addition to 6.11, there are others that I'm going to recommend be tabled. We could do it all at the same time.
Okay.
I'll make a note on the 6.11, and then I'll read all of them that need to be.
Okay, good, that sounds good. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now, we're going to our administrative report. Superintendent Dr. Burney?
Good evening again. This superintendent report will solely focus on the celebration of our staff members who have dedicated a combined 222 years of service to the school city of East Chicago. Let's give them a hand and a... If they are present, we would love for them to come up and receive their certificate of achievement. I will read one certificate of achievement. We will call each of the retirees' name and their years of service. Certificate of achievement proudly presented in recognition of dedicated service and outstanding contributions to the students, staff, and community of the school city of East Chicago. Through their 19 years of commitment, has left a lasting legacy of excellence in education, mentorship, and leadership. We extend our deepest appreciation and best wishes for a joyful and fulfilling retirement. Michael Cartier, 19 years of service. Sandra Davis, 11 years of service. Juanita Espinoza Guillen, 22 years of service. Dora Garcia, 35 years of service. In addition to our staff and retiree, we have another administrator who is retiring. School City of Chicago dedicates this award of excellence and appreciation to Tamara Poole. Thank you for your many years of service and leadership. 28 years of service.
Tammy, you have to take a picture.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, we'll have 4.02 Executive Director of Business Operation, Mrs. Simmons.
Good evening, Board. I would like to do an update. I do know that we have several emails going about HVAC systems going down here in the district, so I would like to get an update on each school. Washington, chiller has been up and down. We had vendor come out today, basically replace some parts. We're okay with Washington chiller. I'm saying that now, but in the morning, it might be something else, so we're moving forward with Washington chiller. Lincoln, we booted Lincoln's chiller up today, but we're waiting on a part from train. I just got the quote right before I came in here. And the part that we're waiting on is a board, a panel board, a display board, so they can track what is actually wrong. But the chiller is up at Lincoln. The high school, as we know, we're going through HVAC renewal over there, so it is warm at the high school, and we have turned off the HVAC that we did have. So also, we had to turn off the water at the high school because of the renovation of the bathrooms. That's going very well. That is going to be done quicker than we thought, because once they went in, they did not find a lot of old stuff that they could not use. So we are moving very fast on the bathrooms at the high school. McKinley, we fixed the south chiller probably about a week ago, and then the north chiller went down. So Dykan is actually shipping a part for that to be replaced, and that should be replaced by Monday or Tuesday. And that's the logistics of the HVAC system. So we are working day in, day out. The call starts at 6 o'clock in the morning of all the number ones getting in the building if they have a problem. They'll call, and we'll get it started early so that we don't have kids. So we do have a big issue, not a big issue, but Washington, we had the issue of it being down, but we also started giving out water to our kids and moving our kids to the auditorium where it was cool at. So we made that one work. Update on the capital projects. One that has started and is on the agenda is the tennis court. So we have all the quotes in for the tennis court, and we're moving forward if the proposal is approved tonight with replacing, which is the asphalt part. We did have the vendor come out to start removing the fence so that the asphalt could be taken all the way up. The restrooms, I just gave you update, is going well. And the chiller at Cary Gosh, that one is also in the process of being analyzed, so up until it is completed, I will be putting a replacement portable unit on the outside of Cary Gosh up until we can get the full details on the replacement of the chiller at Cary Gosh. The two projects that we have going in the back of Central High School, which is the elevator, to be added to the gymnasium area, and also the stairs and the black back ramp to be demoed and reconstructed, those are out for bid up until Thursday at, I do believe, 12 o'clock. All bids should be in Thursday at 12. And on the finance side, we're waiting on the tax payments to come in, which should be in, I do believe, on the 26th, if I read my email right. And also, I gave the board the update of the financials for the last, for this school year, up into May.
Oh, this is for school year up until May of '26?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Oh, all the way up to May of '26?
Oh, we up to '25.
Okay. See that some of these dollars are going to be ending in '93?
Yes, those are the grants that's ending on the federal grants that's ending on '93, has to be encumbered by '93, and they have to be spent out by December 15. So we have to have the last cash request in by December 15.
Motion in a second on the floor to just approve the agenda.
Right.
Let's vote on that, approve it. In addition to 6.11, there are others that I'm going to recommend be tabled. We could do it all at the same time.
Okay.
I'll make a note on the 6.11 and then I'll read all of them.
Okay, good, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, real call please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Now we're going to our administrative report. Superintendent Dr. Burney.
Good evening again. This superintendent report will solely focus on the celebration of our staff members who have dedicated a combined 222 years of service to the School City of East Chicago. Let's give them a hand in a. If they are present, we would love for them to come up and receive their certificate of achievement. I will read one certificate of achievement. We will call each of the retirees' name and their years of service. Certificate of achievement proudly presented in recognition of dedicated service and outstanding contributions to the students, staff, and community of the School City of East Chicago. Through their 19 years of commitment, has left a lasting legacy of excellence in education, mentorship, and leadership. We extend our deepest appreciation and best wishes for a joyful and fulfilling retirement. Michael Cartier, 19 years of service. Sandra Davis, 11 years of service. Juanita Espinoza Guillen, 22 years of service. Dora Garcia, 35 years of service.
Congratulations.
Did she take pictures?
Yes.
I'm right there.
Anthony Gonzalez, 20 years of service. Eliza Gonzalez, three years of service. Cheryl Grenowitz, 29 years of service. William Kelly, 32 years of service. Isabella Simpson, 23 years of service.
Congratulations.
In addition to a staff and retiree, we have another administrator who is retiring. School City of East Chicago dedicates this award of excellence and appreciation to Tamara Poole. Thank you for your many years of service and leadership. 28 years of service. Madam President, that concludes my report.
4.02, Executive Director of Business Operation, Mrs. Simmons.
Good evening, Board. I would like to do an update. I do know that we have several emails going about HVAC systems going down here in the district. So I would like to get an update on each school. Washington chiller has been up and down. We had vendor come out today, basically replace some parts. We're okay with Washington chiller. I'm saying that now, but in the morning, it might be something else. So we're moving forward with Washington chiller. Lincoln, we booted Lincoln's chiller up today, but we're waiting on a part from train. I just got the quote right before I came in here. And the part that we're waiting on is a board, a panel board, a display board, so they can track what is actually wrong. But the chiller is up at Lincoln. The high school, as we know, we're going through HVAC renewal over there. So it is warm at the high school and we have turned off the HVAC that we did have. So also, we had to turn off the water at the high school because of the renovation of the bathrooms. That's going very well. That is going to be done quicker than we thought because once they went in, they did not find a lot of old stuff that they could not use. So we are, we're moving very fast on the bathrooms at the high school. McKinley, we fixed the south chiller probably about a week ago and then the north chiller went down. So Dykan is actually shipping a part for that to be replaced and that should be replaced by Monday or Tuesday. And that's, that's the logistics of the HVAC system. So we are working day in, day out. This start, call starts at six o'clock in the morning of all the number ones getting in the building. If they have a problem, they'll call and we'll get it started early so that we don't have kids. So we do have a big issue, not a big issue, but Washington, we had the issue of it being down, but we also started giving out water to our kids and moving our kids to the auditorium where it was cool at. So we made that one work. Update on the capital projects. One that has started and is on the agenda is the tennis court. So we have all the quotes in for the tennis court and we're moving forward if the proposal is approved tonight with replacing, which is the asphalt part. We did have the vendor come out to start removing the fence so that the asphalt could be took, taken all the way up. The restrooms, I just gave you update, is going well. And the chiller at Kerry Gosh, that one is also in the process of being analyzed. So up until it is completed, I will be putting a replacement portable unit on the outside of Kerry Gosh up until we can get the full details on the replacement of the chiller at Kerry Gosh. The two projects that we have going in the back of Central High School, which is the elevator to be added to the gymnasium area and also the stairs and the black back ramp to be demoed and reconstructed. Those are out for bid up until Thursday at, I do believe, 12 o'clock. All bids should be in Thursday at 12. And on the finance side, we're waiting on the tax payments to come in, which should be in, I do believe, on the 26th, if I read my email right. And also, I gave the board the update of the financials for the last, for this school year, up into May.
Oh, this is for school year up until May of 26?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Oh, all up to May of 26?
Oh, we up to 25.
Okay. See that some of these dollars are going to be ending in 930?
Yes, those are the grants that's ending on, the federal grants that's ending on 930. Has to be encumbered by 930. And they have to be spent out by December 15. So we have to have the last cash requests in by December the 15th.
Do you know? Can you give me a date when you can have your meeting? What's available for you for your finance meetings?
I will, sorry to slip my mind earlier. I will look at the dates now and send it out during this meeting. What dates are going to be available for the finance meeting? I think you all asked me about it too.
Oh, okay.
It totally slipped my mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay then, okay, any questions from Mrs. Simmons?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go into our consent agenda. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve the consent agenda five.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Are there any comments from the board? Yes. Trustee Smith.
Um, on consent agenda, um, claim dockets.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Page one. Claim 87198 through 87199. It's on the first page.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Claim 87.
Let me go back.
871. 98 to 99?
Yes.
Yes, those are the credit card statements.
Okay. What number was that you said?
You said 87198 and 87.
On page one?
199.
87198. 87199.
Correct.
Right. And that was for our conference for that credit card, right?
So the credit cards are basically for conferences and some items that maybe the school district needed. But mostly they're, most of these, these credit card payments here is like for hotels or conference fees on this particular month.
Okay, thank you. Same page. But let me ask you a question, excuse me. Are these cards dedic, I mean, for one individual or for the, for the board?
This is all five. I add all five together to put on the agenda.
Of the credit cards together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There, excuse me. There should be six cards.
There should be six cards.
Yeah, all, all six cards, all the statements that come in.
So they all is in this one payment?
Yes.
Okay. Page, same page. Claim 871, 87188.
This is for our district employees to go to the title boot camp in Indianapolis and basically they go over all the federal funds from the special ed to the title funds.
Okay. What number was that?
The last one.
7188. On page one or two? Yeah, one. 7188? Right here, lad, right here. Okay, now, if I'm not mistaken, you said boot camp, right?
Yes.
So wasn't some people supposed to have been reimbursing some of these dollars that did not finish it out or something of that? There were about eight people for the boot camp?
No, I think we had a total of three from special ed, one from my department. I only know of four going to this boot camp.
Well, not on this one here, it was a previous one and we discussed it and we talked about the boot camp and they were supposed to, if they, some of them did not finish out whatever this boot camp that they were supposed to be doing. But I'll give, I'll give you the names.
Okay.
Of who those individuals are.
This is a one-day boot camp here that they register for.
Okay. Okay, so now let's go to page two. Page two. Claim 18, I mean, 87189. All three of those, 17, I mean, 87189, 87190, 87191. All of those are for conferences?
Hotel, mm-hmm.
Okay. I know by chance you wouldn't know who.
I do believe these are pertaining because of the location, they're pertaining to the boot camp.
Okay.
And it was a pre-run, yes, these are pertaining to the boot camp.
Okay, now, one more thing. Just explain this national association, I'm, I'm giving you this claim. It says National Association of, what's that? It's abbreviated, yeah, it's not spelled out.
Secondary principals.
Guess what?
Secondary principals.
Okay. Okay. All right, nope, I'm not finished. Page. Page five. Next to the last, 87295. No, no, I'm sorry. 87294.
That is a special ed contract? It's a special ed contract?
Okay, all right. Page seven. 87234. 87234.
This is the hosting of the 400 at another location. This is just the rental of the year. So this is IAT, I-T, hosting of our.
All right. Just a few more. Okay. Page nine. This is just a question. 87269. Which funds did that come out of?
That came out of our lunch fund. So this is the register that we have to account for our meals. This is how we count our meals through this I-T software. You did say 269, right?
Yes.
Yes. This is what we account for our meals through. This is how we report them to the state.
Okay, now page 10. Item, claim number. 87244. Is.
This is the fees that we pay other school districts.
I know.
Okay, yeah, this is the fee and this is filtered through Title I.
Okay, and then the next one, is that the same situation? 87270, 87270.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think I'm finished, Ms. Simmons, thank you so much. I want to ask a question, Ms. Simmons. On the back of these credit cards, is there any kind of way you could break them down, see, oh, because we all have a credit card?
Yes, I most definitely can.
The amount, the, each credit card was, was used and the amount put on each, can we have that broken down?
Excuse me, the only reason you do not have it in your invoice packages is because I'm the only one that handles them. My team does not, so that's the reason why they're not located in your invoice packages.
Right, because we never.
But I can send, I can send them over to you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, real call please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. We go to new business, 6.01, approval of personnel report. Are there any comments from the audience? I need a motion for 6.01. Madam President, I make the motion for, for 6.01.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Trustee Smith, second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Yes. Yes. Trustee Smith. Not just, not just right now. Okay. Let's see, we were going to ask Mrs. Leader. Ms. Simmons. Yeah, Ms. Simmons. Thank you. Ms. Simmons, on our personnel report, we have a hire for a new nurse. Can you just tell me how many nurses on staff that are within our district?
So we have a total of, we have a total of three at Central, two at Harrison, and one at all the other schools. Lincoln is right now the only one without a nurse due to her retirement.
Yeah, Lincoln?
Lincoln.
Lincoln.
That was the one I had missed. Okay, now. My question is, so with this new hire for this nurse, why are we hiring another nurse? The laws, the state law says, right now, Indiana school districts are required to have at least one registered nurse with a bachelor's degree on staff. The state recommendation is one nurse for every 750 students. She must be a registered nurse on our end, so we have, how many students in our district?
Oh, 3,000.
3,000, so we shouldn't have that many nurses. We should maybe have three? If we divide it by. I'm, I'm just curious.
So since I came into the district, there has been a nurse at every school. We increased the nurses at high school probably about two years ago that it came up to three. I do not work inside the schools, so the biggest need of nurses I am unsure of. But it, according to your figures that you have there, you said there's 3,000 students in our district and it only supposed to be one per 750?
Yes.
That adds out to four. So at one time, we had a couple of schools that actually did share nurses and they were right down the street from each other. So that was one instance that we had.
Madam Secretary.
Yes, yes.
Madam President.
All right, I'm not going to get upset.
I don't see, I don't see a nurse, what page are we looking at?
We on page, we, we on page number one on the personnel.
I believe that nurse, the decision's been tabled, it's not on.
Yeah, okay, then I think so.
Okay.
Because it was supposed to have been taken off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, well, anyway, thanks for the information. But my question to, yeah.
Yes.
On the personnel report here, we, we had some conversation about this individual here that was supposed to have been, oh, wanted to be rehired. But they have to, they have to reapply. Am I correct, Mrs. Harris?
It was removed.
Oh, okay, it was removed, I'm sorry, okay, that was removed too. Okay, I'm sorry. So that's taken care of too. Okay, so these items have been removed. Okay, is there anything else on the personnel report? No. Uh, let's see here, we had, uh, yes, the involuntary transfers here. Let's see here. Yes, here, on the involuntary transfer. So I see that, um, we have another one on here, Dr. Burney. And what's the reason for this, for this here involuntary transfer here? Because where were they, where are they coming from? Oh, they were from, from Washington to Central?
I'm sorry if you recall, I did share the context for this involuntary transfer in my weekly update.
Okay. I think we're going to table this one too because we had some questions about these involuntary transfers. Why are we having so many of them? And that we have to approve them. And I know you said, you did give an explanation on this one, but there have been quite a few of these transfers for involuntary moves.
Madam President.
Yes, Trustee Gomez.
I can make a secondary motion to remove item number 11 from the personnel report.
Motion made by Trustee Roger, uh, Trustee Gomez.
Number 11?
Yeah, number 11 on the personnel, personnel.
A resignation?
Yeah, involuntary transfer here.
Number 11 is a resignation.
A resignation. Well, I, my, my page says involuntary transfer.
So I believe the updated personnel report that other trustees are looking at is the one that has been published.
Okay, because I don't have it, because I get paper.
I believe other trustees are looking at an older personnel report.
I don't have it, I don't have none y'all talking about.
So number 11 is resignation. The involuntary transfer is number nine. So the board is recommending that number nine be removed?
If that's what it's on the, that's how it is on the personnel report.
That's the update, this is the updated.
Okay. When I get finished, can you make sure you get me an updated copy if you don't mind? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Madam President, so we'll just remove the involuntary transfers from the personnel report. Make that form a secondary motion.
So you're modifying your secondary motion?
Yes.
To, to state that you want all the involuntary transfers on the personnel report removed?
Yes.
Okay. You need a second?
Can I get a second, please? Second. Okay.
Mrs. Gutierrez has additional comments to share.
Okay, well, hold on a minute. While we take care of this. So we got a second on the motion? Yes. I second the motion. Okay, so it will be, it will be removed?
No.
I'm sorry, I got, can I get a vote?
Madam Secretary, Madam President.
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Since this, since right, since this is board discussion, I'd like to hear from Christine, please.
Okay, no problem, go ahead, Christine.
Yes, I just wanted the board to be aware that now that we have surpassed the timeline for voluntary transfers, we've now moved into staffing our buildings with what's called involuntary transfers only because the window for the title voluntary has passed. But I want you to know that we've spoken with the union president, we've spoken with the principals and the person who affects to make sure that the transfer is done with all the due diligence. So in the next coming personnel report, there will be more involuntary transfers, but as we postpone those, we are now hindering ourselves from staffing our buildings for the, the upcoming school year.
Madam President.
The date was off April 15.
Say what now?
The date for voluntary transfers was April 15, that was the deadline date. So anything thereafter becomes an involuntary.
Trustee Gomez.
So is that the, the April 15 deadline is based on what? So, is that, the, um, the April fifteenth deadline is based on what?
It's based on a number of things. It was a decision made by the administration, and they looked at when, um, testing was being done, they didn't want to do anything prior to testing taking place. There were a lot of, uh, into, a lot of factors that took place. They don't want people to find, to know early on about the transfers to give the opportunity for evaluations and everything to be done, so.
Likewise, that's caused problems with the board to try to negotiate, as you know, some involuntary transfers that we've had to rescind, so, um, maybe that's something we need to look at changing.
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yeah, just tell me, go ahead.
As far as the teachers go, there's nothing in our CBA that says we cannot be involuntary transferred. Dr. Burney and met with the union representatives early on about, um, setting up a voluntary transfer portal, um, and that was done, published, people that wanted to move, applied, and those people, I think, got to move where they wanted to go. Um, and then, so, anything after that date that Ms. Gutierrez said would be an involuntary transfer, and there's nothing in our CBA, in the teacher's CBA, that says that that can't be done. I don't know about the other unions, so. But we're very transparent, and we make sure that, like we said, the unions address, the individuals address, and of, of course, the principal, and then our superintendent. So, more will be coming, I'm just making sure that the next personnel report, everybody understands.
Well, like, go ahead, trustee Smith. Yeah, like Mr. Gomez says, the board, we, we have been having problems with these involuntary transfers, voluntary transfers, what have you not. So, we don't have enough information, you know, as to, I know that there were some transfers where people, Dr. Burney gave them a choice, and then people did make those choices, but now, like you said here, they keep on coming. So, we're not gonna keep on entertaining that. I don't think so, you know, because it comes in front of us too many times, and then when it happens, then people are complaining, like we get, we've had several, and we got some stuff right now on the table for a situation at hand right now because of this situation here. So, what was your motion, trustee Gomez?
The motion was to remove the involuntary transfer.
You second it, trustee Smith?
Second.
Madam, go ahead, go ahead, trustee.
On your, now I've lost my favor. On one of your, uh, memorandum, uh, you had an employee, you put them under the wrong funding. You got them under general funding as opposed to educational.
Oh, which, which one is that?
That was...
Madam President, are, are we still on the transfer, or we?
No, we still, no, we still on this personnel. We on the personnel.
We still on the personnel.
But we.
Yeah, it was, uh, I don't wanna call the person's name, but I just bring it to your attention, when you do this, then state boards of account see that, and they're thinking it's coming out of general funds, there is no more general fund, that has been gone in the last seven years, it's only educational, uh, and occupational, um, operation. So, when you are doing your, where the funds come from, please be very, very mindful of where those funds come from, because there is no more general fund.
Are you speaking in terms of a memo that was sent from maybe a director that listed the fund? Because on the personnel report, they all say education fund.
Well, my report, it says general.
Can you tell me what number that is?
I don't, it's, no, it's just on this memo right here, and I don't wanna call the person's name out. I'll show it to you later.
Okay.
And then, um, like we were talking about, when you are getting that you duties involuntary transfers, please do your research before you do it, because you never know the stipulations or the rules that you are violating. So, please be very mindful when you're doing transfers, do your research before you do them, because you're causing more harm than you are helping. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Trustee Taylor, did you have something to say?
No, I was just gonna say that, um, yeah, it's true, we, we are kinda caught up in a situation right now where, uh, the transfers have caused us, uh, to meet and discuss, but, and, and have some discussion, but I think in this instance, um, I, it appears that all the parties involved are, are in agreement, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, this was presented a while back where, um, as far as the, I guess, the restructuring of the district, where Dr. Burney was going to have that window, like Ms. Gutierrez just stated, where they were gonna allow voluntary transfers, and then, we were gonna then transition to the involuntary transfers, but if I'm listening, I'm hearing correctly, this particular one, all parties involved are in agreement.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
So, I do have one question.
Yes.
For HR Director, uh, with regards, and I'm not sure if I'm clear as to what the question trustee Gomez stated, you, you stated April sixteenth, was that, is that a statute, or is that a, or this is just an administrative decision?
Yes.
Okay.
A team of administrators.
Gotcha.
That, mhm.
Came in, okay.
Uh-huh, we developed a plan, and it has dates and, and so forth, and so that's one of the dates that was placed on there. Dr. Burney wanted to allow employees an opportunity to ask or request to, uh, transfer to other places that may have, may have had a vacancy already.
Yeah, and they did. All of them did.
And, and then after the deadline date, they weren't allowed to voluntarily transfer.
Right, because it was closed up, but you did have, if I'm not mistaken, it was only one person that went to block out of that, that group of people that Dr. Burney had, if I'm not mistaken. Right?
That's right.
So, Madam Secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, what am I doing now?
We gonna get a roll call.
On, on the floor is a secondary motion for approval of the personnel, well, first, just for removal of all of the involuntary transfers from the personnel report.
Oh, okay.
So, the motion is just for the removal of involuntary transfers.
This particular involuntary transfer, not all of them.
All of them that appear on the personnel report.
Oh, one, 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 okay.
Secondary motion for the removal. This important. Also secondary. Oh, okay, I'm ready.
Just to clarify, there's only one, so it's item, item nine.
Yes, only one, one item.
Item nine, removal of item nine.
So, we gonna just remove item nine, and just act for a vote? For the transfer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm ready, I'm ready now.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Trustee, trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
No.
No. Trustee Taylor.
No.
Trustee, Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Yes. And I have a question, another on the personnel report too, about this here, uh, page, I mean, number ten, and I think that we had discussed this several times, but this individual. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm so sorry, you did, you did say that, Burney, okay, all right. So, um, okay, so we can move on then, right?
Now, we need to approve the personnel report as amended.
Yes, okay, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the personnel report as amended with the removal of the involuntary transfer.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Second by me. About, um, trustee Smith, mhm.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Now, we go to six point zero two, approval of Acadia of the new universal screening, uh, screener program. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get, is there a motion to approve six point zero two?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item six point zero two off the agenda.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez. Second by trustee Gomez, can I get, uh, are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Uh, now, we're gonna go to, uh, six point zero three, and, uh, it's the memorandum of understanding with Ivy Tech Community College of High School based dual credit. That's good. Okay, are there any questions from the audience? Uh, can I get a motion to approve six point zero three?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve six point zero three.
Motion made by, motion made by trustee Smith, second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the board? Now, we go to six point zero four. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Six point zero four, approval memorandum of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority in Alpha Kappa Omega chapter. Are there any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve six point zero four?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item six point zero four.
Motion made by trustee Smith.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam, Madam President.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
So, I believe this one has been reviewed by our attorney.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. So, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Six point zero five, approval of memorandum of understanding with Delta Sigma Theta. Are there any questions from the audience? Is there a motion for approval of six point zero five?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item six point zero five.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any, uh, questions from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Just, just, just wanted to show that, uh, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority has been very proactive in public education. I had an opportunity to be in one of their panels in Gary, Indiana, along with, uh, one of our trustees in Hammond, our trustee president Hammond is, and, uh, our state rep.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Six point zero six, approval memorandum of understanding with Kappa Alpha, uh, fraternity. They the same ones, then, right? Oh, no, they're different ones, okay. Yeah, six point zero six, are there any questions from the, from the audience? Uh, motion to approve six one zero six.
Madam President, make a motion for approval of six point zero six.
Motion made by trustee Smith.
Second, that motion.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Approve, uh, six point zero seven, approval of newer county system, Boyus Financial Software. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for six point zero seven?
Madam President, I make a motion for item six point zero seven.
Motion made by trustee Smith.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Six point zero eight, approval memorandum of understanding with E Chicago Central Alumni.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I could, um, and I'm gonna try to help us to move along with the agenda a little bit.
Yes.
There are several items, uh, from here on that, um, I'm recommending be tabled, and those, they're not necessarily all in order, so I'll just read them off. It's six point zero eight, six point one two, and six point one six through six point two nine. Uh, we need some additional time to work with the staff, um, to get these documents in, in proper order. So, again, I'm recommending, uh, that someone make a motion to table items six point oh eight, six point one two, and six point one six through six point two nine.
So.
Madam President, make a motion.
Wait, let me just get the, the numbers, please.
Yep.
You said from six point zero eight.
Yes.
Six point zero eight.
Uh-huh.
Six point one two.
Wait, one two, six point one two. Yes.
And six point one six through six point two nine.
Through six point two nine, whoa, that's nice. All of these, okay. So, okay, so, okay, so you're tabling all of these, right?
I'm recommending that, uh, a trustee make a motion to table.
Can we get a motion to table? Oh, you did, Rodriguez, right?
Yeah, Madam President, I, I'm making that motion, uh, I'll just reiterate, uh, the items again, six point zero eight, six point one two, six point one six through six point two nine.
And six point one one was, uh.
I forgot about my note, you wanted six point one one, yes, and six point one one.
I'll add that as well.
Yes, okay.
Can you repeat what you were saying as far as, um, I guess I'm concerned about six point zero eight, because we already have
Oh, we got a.
Advertisement out there, and.
Yeah, yes, and you can approve and ratify it at the next meeting, there isn't an issue with the substance of six point zero eight, it's just if you look at the document when you open it up, it doesn't comply with our format, uh, for the MOU. Now, I know that my office did prepare the MOU, for some reason, it just didn't end up on board docs.
Okay.
So, that's the only reason I'm recommending that you table that. Again, it's a formatting issue, and including that six point one six through six point two nine, same, same issue.
Same thing.
So, it's not a reflection of the substance of the items, it's just the format, I don't want you to approve a document. We've had that issue before, and I don't want you to have that issue again.
Okay.
Right.
Right, I hear you.
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Harris, can you clarify the rationale for six point one two?
So, I'm not recommending, um, that six point one two be tabled for the same reasons as the other MOUs, it's my understanding that, um, the board would like to have six point one two tabled, they can do that or not do that, it's up to them.
Yeah, we gonna table all of this.
All of the contracts?
Yes, everything that Mr. Harris called off.
No, I'm saying all of six point twelve.
No, from, from all the ones that he called off, he started from six point.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I mean, everything in six point twelve, I, I'm okay with the other numbers, but the one in six point twelve, everything within six point twelve?
Yes. Everything went six four twelve two. And then he said all the way down, starting from six point seventeen, all the way down to six point twenty nine. Sixty, oh, you say what now? Once, six point one six, all the way down to six.
Point two nine.
Two nine, yes, okay.
So, I got a question, um, are we on discussion right now, Madam President? As we, as we looking at six point one two, there's gonna, there may be a lapse, because if we're, if we're, I believe the contracts all end on six thirty. So, if our next board meeting's gonna be sometime in July, that would, wouldn't that affect the, the, the terms of not being worked?
If you were to approve this at your next meeting, you can approve and ratify it retroactive to whatever date you choose, so no, you wouldn't have any issues. So long as when you do approve it at the next meeting, you do it retroactive to whatever date is necessary, so it'd be retroactive, so that it'll start July one.
Oh, you talking about for the contracts?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
He was worried about a lapse, and that there'd be some gap, but as long as you approve it properly at the next meeting, you wouldn't have that issue, and Dr. Burney, would you agree that you could do that?
They'll be retro.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we just have to make sure that that retro is, the word retro is in, okay.
I'm not understanding.
Okay, let me speak to you, Mr. Sayet, if you don't mind. This is just Attorney Harris. Can they be approved with now and then with the, making addendum the next time?
No, but as Madam Chair is going through her documents, what I would recommend so that we don't slow down the meeting is, why don't we look at tabling 6.08 and 6.16 through 6.29 only? I think there needs to be some additional discussion about 6.12, and that's what Madam President's looking through right now. We can deal with that one separately. I don't think anyone has any issue with tabling 6.08, 6.11, and 6.16 through 6.29. That way, we can take a vote on that and keep things moving along.
Madam President, I'll go ahead and amend my motion by removing 6.12. So, the motion is to remove 6.08.
Table.
Or table, 6.08, 6.11, 6.16 through 6.29.
So, 6.11, okay, all right. I'm not taking that. I'm not, I'm not.
Second.
Yes, there's a motion and a second to table items 6.08, 6.11, and 6.16 through 6.29. That's it. Just those. No, just the ones I just read off. We'll deal with 6.12 separately. So, right now, you can just take a roll call on the motion on the floor, which is to table 6.08, 6.11, and 6.16 through 6.29. We'll get to 6.12 separately. Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Okay, so trustee- Ready for roll call?
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Smith. Okay, trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. Okay.
Yes. I'm not everybody, yeah. Don't you come back to it. Oh, we don't like to it now, okay. That wasn't in the, that was not in the business.
Actually, what's up next is 6.09.
Yes.
6.09.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we're going to go to 6.09. Are there any questions from the audience in 6.09? Approve of disposal of special education equipment in technology. 6.09, are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a- Okay, all right.
I had a question on this item. As I understand it, the things are past their warranty date, and that's what they're being disposed, that's why they're being disposed of at this time. I'd be curious, too, though, I know we have a lot of different facilities in the area, and especially depending on what those things are, especially if they're communication devices, other things like that. Sometimes there is still a need for devices. So, whether it's like disposal, like overthrowing them out, because it seems like they're like no longer up to date. There may be other, or if it's disposal, like these are being donated to places that actually still have a need, and this still fits within their scope of a thing that's usable to them. Is there any kind of clarification around that?
Everything being disposed of is not in working condition, very old, yes. And it's, they are computers that are not running and stuff like that. Anything that we can use, we usually let the kids use for home, you know, stuff like that. We make sure that our students have access to anything. Some of them may need a computer at home and at school, stuff like that, so we do. But for the most part, they're not in working condition. No. Oh, no, these are very old.
Can I get a motion for 6.09, please?
Madam Secretary, make a motion to approve item 6.09.
Madam President.
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.09.
Yes, motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 6.10, approve of NICO phone system recommendation. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.10?
Madam President, I make a motion for approval for 6.10.
Motion by trustee Smith.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now, we're going to go to 6.12, approve of-
11.
Oh, 6.11, I thought it was tabled.
Oh, that was included. I keep forgetting about your table. Sorry. Yes.
Yeah, that's tabled. So, we're going to go to 6.12.
Yes, so with respect to 6.12, which is approval of certified administrator contracts for the 2025-26 academic year, I believe that there are certain items on the contract list that board members may want to table. So, if you recall, originally, that was on the list to be tabled along with all the others that we discussed. But instead, we pulled that, we're having a separate discussion on that. And if there is a motion to be had to remove any particular items, that's something that could be made now to approve the removal of certain items. And again, that would have to be done without listing individuals' names. We're not dealing with a personnel list, so I don't have numbers to reference to call off numbers. So, they would need to be designated in some other way.
Yes. Oh, do you have a contract?
I have the contracts, but I-
Oh, but you don't see anything on it that we could do at any other kind of-
Right, it's not like the personnel list where I could say item 10, 11, 12. They're just individual contracts. So, if there are certain contracts that any trustee would like to see removed, you just have to make that motion.
Oh, okay.
So, it appears to be, sorry, Madam President.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On the top of the contract, maybe it's a question for you, Joel, is there an identifier number on the top, once you open it?
If so, I am not familiar with those numbers. I don't deal with those numbers. Superintendent Bornet, do the numbers at the top mean anything to you?
Yes, so there are different numbers for each contract that's been generated.
Right, so, like, for example, the first one-
My mic wasn't on. So, there are different numbers for each contract being generated.
Okay, so if we could pull any one, there's a set of four numbers to start out with. Then it looks like there's a percentage, and then there's some abbreviations, another number. And so, which one of those is the actual contract number? Is it the first set of four numbers?
I would do the first set of numbers.
Okay. All right, based upon our discussions, I believe the motion would be to remove contract numbers 11478, 11548, and 11512. Yes, 11478, 11548, and 11512.
115, what now?
12.
12. Okay. So, now we can approve of what we've got to do now with that.
Well, someone would need to make the motion. I just read off the numbers.
Do we have the numbers again?
Yes, I'll read them off. 11478, 11548, and 11512.
114. 78.
Madam President. Yeah, I'll make a motion to table 11478, 11548, 11512.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez. Hold on. Second, second by trustee Smith. You say what now?
11548.
115, who's that one? Hold on a minute, please. Oh, there it is. Yes.
Second.
Second by trustee Gomez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes.
Again, this is one of those ratification situations where on our next meeting, we're able to ratify it, there's-
Yes, you are.
Okay. Contracts proof, okay.
Madam Secretary, roll call. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Gomez.
Question I have is-
Okay, what is it, trustee Gomez?
I'm looking for the candidate.
Oh, you know what?
Just a second. Attorney Harris. Do any of these contracts, it appears that they read to a one-year contract, is- Yeah, are any of these by law required to be two-year contracts?
Not based on my review. Dr. Bornet, do you want to add to that?
I believe certified administrators are supposed to be issued a two-year contract.
So, my understanding of that is that there are certain certified administrators that are required to have a two-year contract in the initial term of their contract. So, that's my, that's my understanding of the way the law reads, as opposed to if you're certified administrator, you automatically get a two-year contract. That's not my interpretation of the law. I believe it's when you are a first-year certified administrator, and there's a statute that governs, such as the Director of Special Education. The law says in the initial term of a contract for the Special Education Director, they shall have a two-year contract. So, of those that are here, there isn't any requirement for them to have a two-year contract. They could be on one-year contracts. Correct.
Madam President, I just want to be clear about something.
Madam President, if there's no more discussion, you're ready for a roll call.
If I could, though, Attorney Harris, these are not broken down, as you mentioned, by specific titles. There is no titles on these.
That's a question for the superintendent.
I'm sorry, trustee Gomez, could you restate your question?
Yes, the question, according to Attorney Harris, there are certain contracts that would require a two-year initial contract. Beyond that first two years, then they're open to one-year contracts. None of these are broken down by title. They just have, these are all regular teacher contracts. So, how do we know which is a one-year and which is a two-year contract?
You would have to know which administrators are starting their first administration with the school city. And the board may have seen that contract earlier this year when those administrators were hired.
And again, based on my review, I don't think any of them are required to have two-year contracts. contracts. So, I think the contracts as they read are not a problem. Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I, I, I know what it reads, but Attorney Harris was saying that it depends on the position that the individual's in, and, um, there are no positions listed here. Just, just the names of the individuals. So, if somebody is a, if somebody was in position A, and they are now in position B, aren't they requir- aren't they, isn't it required to have position B be a two-year contract?
I understand your question. I think the best way for us to deal with it is, the contracts in their current form, based upon what we know, I think are acceptable, but I think we should request that the superintendent provide a report for our next meeting outlining all the positions, et cetera, and if any need to be rescinded or ratified in some way, the board can do that at the next meeting.
And the question I have is 4363, so if we can table that one until we get a response, 4363. 4363.
4363, that's another person?
Yes.
All I'm asking is that, Madam President, that the description, the job description, I mean, it's, it's placed, the title, the job title, not the description, but the job title.
So, there's already a motion, okay, I have a question for Joel, is that okay?
Yes.
All right, could we, could we vote on these separately, as opposed to all?
Well, right now, there's a motion on the floor for three.
There are three of them to be-
For three of them.
To be removed.
And, and now, I believe, there's a secondary motion being made to add one more. So, the question is whether there's a second to the secondary motion, to add 4363. That's the question. Correct. If there's a second.
There's a second.
And right now, I have not heard a second. Correct. And if there's no second, Madam President, you can go forward, then, with the underlying motion, which was-
The three.
Correct.
Yes, okay, so I'll go with the three. What do I say now?
You're ready for roll call on those three.
Roll call, then, on the three.
Trustee Gomez. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
So, Madam President, at this point, you would need a motion to approve, uh, the certified administrator contracts as amended.
So, yes, so I would like to approve, I mean, I want to get a motion approved, uh, 1.12 administrative contracts.
As amended.
As, as amended.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 6.12 as amended.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez, second by trustee Gomez. Okay, so now, we're gonna go to, um, oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion, and then roll call.
Roll call, please. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. 6.13 approval of the teachers' contract. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for approved 6.13?
Madam Secretary, I make a motion to approve item 6.13.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Pre- Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. 6.14 approval of site service for the tennis court. Hey, they, can I get a course, as, comment from the audience? Oh, can I get approval for 6.14?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 6.14.
Motion made by trustee Smith.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. 6.15 approval of second reading for policies, PO 0166.3, consent agenda, and PO 3440, job-related expense professional staff, uh, PO 4440, job-related expense support, support staff, and draft policy, PO 0166.3, adoption of the agenda items. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for approval of 6.15 policies, all these policies, approved for second reading?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 6.15.
Motion made by trustee, uh, Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions? I'm, I'm sorry, Taylor, I'm sorry. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. 6.16 approval contract renewal with Fair Haven.
Madam Secretary.
Oh, that's it, right? Oh, that's it, okay, so, yeah, 'cause, yes, okay, so now, we will go to, uh, we will go to our public forum.
Yes, if you could, please step to the podium and state your name. You'll have three minutes for your comments. Please be respectful of the board, the staff, and the audience, and also, please refrain from discussing any individual personnel matters. Thank you.
Ray Castaneda.
Uh, Ray Castaneda, 4828 Carey Street. Um, I've been in here before to discuss a, a matter that happened on social media, which one of the board members had put on social media on my page, uh, asking a 24-year-old woman where does she like to be grabbed? And, um, I had read you guys the code of ethnics before for the school board, and just in case you guys don't know, I'm gonna read it again. I understand that all social media accounts I maintain are in public domain, and therefore, any information, comments, photos, and other texts, or media generated from, from, or posted to those accounts can reflect upon my position with the board. I therefore agreed to conduct myself in the same manner on these platforms as I would behave in public. Forum, forum, in accordance with these arrangements. So, I told you guys before, Jesse Gomez had made these comments on my post, and if that was my daughter, which I have a 28-year-old daughter that he made them comments about, we would not be having this discussion right now. So, with you guys not doing nothing about him still being on the board, I think that Jesse Gomez has some kind of dictation on his board, with, with, with his, uh, political views that he brings to this board. And I'm not accusing anybody, but that's what it seems like, because he's still on this board with, with, with the code of ethnics that he violated, clearly violated on my Facebook post. So, I'm hoping that you guys would do the right thing and get together to discuss this matter. That's all I want to say.
Well-
It's up to the president's discretion.
Yes, um, I want to say something to that young man there, can you just, I think that, didn't we speak with you at the last, last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll talk with you again. We'll talk with you again after the, after the board meeting is there. Yes, uh, you can speak, um-
Thank you for the name of speaker. My name's Keith Cleveland. I'm a custodial worker for the school city. A while back, I spoke with the president and the superintendent, and I had, was transferred to a school. The school that you transferred me to, I'm doing good.
Sir, sir, if you could, don't discuss your own personnel matter. You can make general comments regarding, uh, the administration or the operation of the school, but don't divulge any of your personal, uh, matters in the public meeting.
Okay.
So, if there's a way for you to express your point without doing that, you're welcome to do so. Just don't get into the, the specifics of your personnel matter. It's even a pending grievance, so that's the reason we can't discuss it in the public meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I'm happy at the school I'm at, and I wish to stay there, and I wish to speak to you after this meeting.
Thank you.
Sure, Ms. Poe, hit up and speak. Good evening, school board. I wanted to get up here tonight and just say thank you. But I wanted to just say that I have had the most challenging, most gratifying, and most rewarding job there's ever been. It's not been a job. I've worked hard for the kiddos, and, um, I just want to say that, um, I have always tried to do what was best. I've always tried to make sure that our kiddos had what they needed, um, and I just want to say thank you for the support. Thank you for, um, just being there for the kiddos and for allowing me to do a job that I have loved. I'm not leaving, um, for any reason, but to help my parents. My mother-in-law is 95, and my mother is 86, and, um, I have given a lot of years to our babies. I'm not going away, but they need me now, and I have to give to them, because I never needed a babysitter, 'cause my parents took care of my kids. So, I'm leaving only to help out, but I'm gonna be here. Uh, last week, you allowed me, and I want to say thank you for go- to go on a conference that was so amazing. Um, thank God, the, uh, foundation picked it up, and, uh, but it's, it's an amazing, um, event that I couldn't believe was taking place in Florida. The teachers don't have to spend a penny, because that foundation opened a warehouse bigger than Costco to let them come and shop. They have a receipt that they walk out with zero on that receipt, and not only that, the, the, that's called a gift for teachers. There's a gift for music. The students get free, uh, instruments, and they get free lessons. I was part of an event that took place, 25 back, 25,000 backpacks were filled by 400 volunteers from all over, and this is due to the fact that one man said teachers should never have to take money out of their pockets, and then another man said kids need music, and another, and then foundations put this together, and what happened is that out of that came an amazing foundation for teachers and children. And what I'd like to tell you is that I'm gonna work hard to get that type of program here for our teachers and kids. I met with senators, I met with a lot of people. I'm going to hook them up so that we have the same thing here. So, although I may be gone as a Director of Special Education, I will not be gone as a volunteer for our children. So, I want to say thank you for all the great years. And thank you to my team. I have an amazing team, I have amazing people, and I just have to tell you that this has been a hard decision, but I'm, I'll be here, I promise, and I will help with anything. I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Oh, man, thank you, Tammy Poe, for your speech. Well... Okay, so, um, our next meeting. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get out of it. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, trustee Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to, um, thank Tammy for her years of service, but also thanks to all the retirees who put in, uh, uh, a tremendous number of years servicing our children. We have quite a, uh, challenging school district, and it's nice to know that people stuck with us through, through all the challenging times, um, so, uh, thanks again to all the retirees. I know, uh, earlier this month, we celebrated, uh, Juneteenth here in the school district. Um, not every school district celebrates it, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that we are doing our part in celebrating that, uh, uh, special moment in, in, in our nation's history. Likewise, there's, uh, you know, June is also Pride Month, and I know there's a variety of people here working in our school district who don't often get recognized, um, for, you know, uh, uh, not only the services they provide, but, you know, the personal choices that they make in life, and so, um, I, I want to make a special shout-out to those individuals and those students who also may not feel to be the traditional kind of, um, of person that, um, society in general has, has expected, but I believe that, you know, it's a growing acceptance of the, uh, of those communities that make our school district, uh, pretty special. I did want to talk about a couple of other things. Attorney Harris, just going back to our items that we pulled off, um, as the board has not made a choice on, uh, those three individuals, um, their contracts have, will effectively end on June 30th, um, in terms of reporting for work July 1, what, what does that mean for them?
Based upon the way, um, we removed items from the agenda and the discussion that was had, I would recommend that they continue to report to work until the board considers, um, what action will be taken, uh, long-term, but we don't want to have a gap in service or any, uh, interruption in the operation of the district.
Okay. I did want to talk about one of the items we passed the, um, coming through the policy committee that, um, trustee Taylor and I are on, and that's, uh, policy 0166.1. For quite some time, we've been trying to get the personnel report to be, uh, open and transparent, as it is in other school districts that touch our city's boundaries, namely Hammond, Gary, and Whiting, who all publish names on their personnel report, something that this school district used to do as well, uh, not so long ago. So, under that current policy, uh, the names of employees have to be published, and they have to be made available by hard copy to the, um, to the public, so that when they walk in this, uh, board meeting, they can have those, um, names available to them. It's kind of ridiculous when we ask public for input, and yet we don't provide them any information to- any information to make an input on. So I'm happy that we're making progress there as well. I wanted to draw to your attention Attorney Harris' House Bill 1515. And just give me a second. I know we talked about this briefly, and I talked to Attorney Snow as well. But in Section 9, it reads that "A student enrolled in a public school makes an allegation that an employee of the public school engaged in misconduct with or pertaining to the student. And two, the public school determines that the allegation is unsubstantiated or otherwise dismissed. The public school shall, not later than 14 days after the date of public school makes a determination, provide written notice by mail, personal delivery, or electronic mail to the employee of the public school and a parent of the student that the allegation has been determined to be unsubstantiated or otherwise dismissed." I'm not sure if we rolled that into a policy or as a state statute that maybe can stand on its own. But secondly, since our athletic director is here, I wanted to address this part, Section 17, that says "A head coach or assistant coach who coaches an athletic activity, a marching band leader, a drama or musical leader, or a leader of an extracurricular activity in which students have an increased risk of sudden cardiac arrest activity as determined by the department in consultation with an organization that specializes in the prevention of sudden cardiac arrest." And it goes on to say that "An individual described in the previous subsection, it used to say 'may,' now it says 'shall,' ensure that an operational automated external defibrillator is present at each event in which a student have an increased risk of sudden cardiac arrest for which individual..."
...defibrillate.
Excuse me?
...defibrillate.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to have some input from Attorney Harris. Thank you.
This is also required by the state before, as part of the mandate for them to...
Yeah, well, it used to say 'may,' it says 'shall' now.
Well, the state says, the state says you're required to do it.
This is the current law that I'm addressing.
Is you're required to do it? It's not a debate?
It's not a debate. I'm reading to you from the Indiana House Enrolled Act Number 1515, and it's effective July 1 of this year. It then goes on to say that the school district should develop a venue-specific emergency action plan for sudden cardiac arrest. That this is new, includes elements recommended by the American Heart Association, Heart Safe School Programs, or another similarly nationally-recognized evidence-based program. Attorney Harris, I'll leave this with you, and you can go through it, and you could talk about it later.
I appreciate that. Generally speaking, statutes like that are standalone. They speak for themselves. But a policy is helpful if the purpose of the policy is to be instructive to the staff on how to carry out the directives of the statute. So if the policy outlines what the reporting requirements are, how items are to be documented, those kind of things, that'd be pursuant to a district policy. But the law is what it is, right?
Right, yeah. So, yeah, if...
I will take a look at it, though.
I'd like your input on it. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
On everybody, every athletic department, for every sport, Dr. Brown, don't we have a physician for every sport?
Madam President, that concludes my remarks.
Yes, Trusty Smith, do you have anything to say?
I just want to say congratulations to those for job well done, for the years that you've served, and for those that are now leaving to retire and live a good life without stress. Tammy, I'm going to go back a minute. When I first got on this board, you and Ms. Randolph, you really helped me understand a whole lot. And when COVID hit, what did we do? We prayed. We bought prayer books. We bought crosses. We bought everything we could to make this district work during that particular time. So I just want to commend you on hanging in there with that. And Linda, I'm just going to commend all of you all that went through that particular episode, special ed. It wasn't easy. Lila, I mean, I'm just bringing back memories because, Tammy, I know all the things that we had to go through, and all the equipment that we had to come up with, and all the ideas, and we didn't know which way to go. So I'm just saying, thank you all, all of the schools that helped us go through that. And we're losing good people from retirement, but I'm not mad at you. But I do envy you. I do envy you. But I just want to say thank you for your years. Remember the cup that I gave you. Don't make me cry. Whenever you feel like you alone, just pick up that cup and drink out of it. Carry that cup with you and just drink out of it until, you know, you feel a lot better. And your books, because, you know, we have a lot of books. But I just want to say thank you for the years that you've served. I hope your husband said you're supposed to enjoy the rest of your retirement and your... That's what he said. And for you not to come up here, but that's what he said. But we know that what he said really doesn't matter. Now, as far as the athletic department, you all are doing a very good job with the sports. I'm glad we're getting a tennis court built.
Yes.
We have one more eyesore. We must get rid of that boat. So I have a truck. I have a truck with the hitch, so you let me know when you want that boat removed.
Yes. Yes. We're going to get one.
Is that going to come on the list for...
So that's on the list.
For Lila to...
Sure.
Yes.
What is the process of removing those boats? I mean, is this something...
Oh, well, we're going to talk about it. You know, we're going to get to it.
But I'm just going to let you know it's going to be done.
Yes.
And I just want to say thank you all for being supportive and everything, and I love you all. Have a great night. And happy belated birthday to all the Geminis in the room.
Okay. Trusty Rodriguez, please.
Again, I just want to thank all the retirees for your hard work, your service here at School City of Chicago. More importantly, I want to thank Tammy Poe. I've known her since the 12 years that I've been here in the district, and she's always been astute and answered all the questions that we needed her to add, all the questions that we asked. She's definitely answered all those questions, and I do appreciate that from you. And I know that your passion and your love for the children. And if I was the superintendent, I'll be looking to see if maybe we can work something out. I know your family, I know that your family is the most important thing in your life right now. But, you know, as far as coming back just to monitor as a consultant or something, I would definitely like to see something like that. So other than that, with regards to the boats, I think there's like 11 of them, right? 11 or 12 of them? I know that was in the past, I think it was a federal contract, so I think there has to be some sort of disposition on the federal level. I think our attorneys can review, look at that to see how we can, before we can actually dispose of those boats. That's why they've been sitting there, because we don't know the process as far as removing those items. So, yeah. And I do apologize for the long business portion of the meeting. I know we have a work session. We have a work session that we sort of ask all the questions. However, I believe Director Finance wasn't at our work session, so the questions that we've held, we've held to the public meetings. So I know that kind of was a little too long, so I do apologize for that, from us. And lastly, again, I want to thank, I just want to thank everyone for such a great year, school year. We've received awards. We've received recognition from the National School Board of Association. There were so many positive moves and directions going not only by the staff, by the faculty, by the administration, the teachers. It was, to me, I feel this probably was the best year out of all the years that I've been in.
All right.
Let's go see through Chicago. So I want to thank you guys for that. And thank you again. That ends my comments. Thanks.
Trusty Taylor.
Good evening. First, I want to echo what everyone has said. To all those who have retired, thank you. God bless you, and enjoy your life to the fullest. Your dedication and service has definitely left a lasting legacy, and you deserve every moment of rest ahead. Ms. Poe, I... I don't know why I got so emotional, but you've been so supportive to me during this time with my mother. Now I understand why. And I commend you for that. I admire you, and I thank you. You showed up for me and not even knowing that you were going through it yourself. So that's very special. It takes a very special person to be there and supportive of, this is not your job, is your calling, and other people while you're going through your own soul. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and I appreciate you, and I hope that I still have access to you. Also, I just want to make a statement in regards to the personnel report again. And I probably sound like a broken record. I've said this before. If I was in the public, I would probably be at that podium every school board meeting asking for the names on the personnel report as well. But I need to reiterate that currently the integrity as it relates to the personnel report has been compromised. And for that reason, you know, compromised by the very few that have access to those names prior to a school board meeting. So for that reason, you know, I've been trying to, you know, just kind of think through it, you know, trying to find a solution. I actually met with Dr. Bornet today. We sat for about an hour, and we had this discussion. And one of the things that we came up with is how about if, once we approve the personnel report, turn right back around before the next meeting, make sure that the updated personnel report with names is uploaded into Board Docs. So right now, he was sharing that personnel report with names once it was approved to the School City District. And I was like, well, how could we get it out to the public? So again, until we figure out where that compromise is at, I do not feel comfortable putting those names out there until the personnel report has been approved. So I think we are in agreement that we'll go ahead and get those uploaded once it's been approved, go right back to Board Docs, and it'll be uploaded with names. Lastly, and I'm just going to kind of repeat what I said in the last school board meeting, I just want to reaffirm my commitment to each and every one of you. I do stand firmly by the code of ethics, and I pledge that every decision that I make and every action I take will reflect my personal values, the values of our school district, which is our shared responsibility to service community with honesty, integrity, and transparency. That is what I wrote my campaign on, and that is how I... Those are my personal core values: integrity, honesty, and transparency. Accountability is very key. Accountability. You have the right, as the public, thank you for coming up here and asking your questions and holding us accountable. You have every right to ask, seek clarity, and expect the answers. That's how public service should work. So I welcome that responsibility with humility and resolve. And just know that if there's anything in my power to do, anything in my power that I can do to hold individuals accountable, you have my full commitment. I will do it. However, being a voice, showing up and standing firm is all I can do and continue to do until there's an actionable solution that I can execute. But just continue to show up, share, you know, share your concerns. That's what we're here for. We are accountable to you, and I said it last meeting. We are, you know, he reports to us, or we're accountable, but, you know, he is accountable to us, but you all, you know, hold us accountable. You all elected us. No one got appointed here. No one, you know, applied to be here. You all elected us. So the viable way to get us off of here is unelect us, right? So the ball is in your court, but that doesn't mean that you don't get to voice your opinion. Your voice matters. And you may feel like you're not being heard. You may feel like you're not being, you know, acknowledged. Trust me, they're listening. There's about a good 35 people watching right now on YouTube that are not even sitting here. So thank you again. Have a good night. And wow, yeah, two hours. Let's go.
Man, thank you all. Did Trusty speak already?
Yeah.
Yes. I want to thank you for your help down there. Yes. Thank you all, as I have to always, as my board do apologize. But I think we're going to get better with our meetings as we go along the way here. But I want to thank Dr. Bornet for acknowledging those ones that did retire with the certificates. They were here in our district for quite a long time. Tammy Poe, you know, I've been knowing you for, I'm not going to even say how many years, but I know that you put a lot into the work that you do do. And I wish you well. I know it is time for you to do some things that we all finagle when we have jobs. We try to multitask, and that kind of like sometimes, you know, gets to bog us down, but we do survive, okay? And I just want to wish you well on whatever it is that you're out to do. You're not going to be forgotten. Want to speak on the code of ethics? Like my colleague, Mercedes Taylor, said, the code of ethics that I abide by all of them, but the main one for me is children first. That's the first thing on our code of ethics is our children. And that is who we have gotten elected for, is our children. I cannot be held accountable for anybody up here because we are elected officials. And like Mrs. Taylor said, you have to undo us, unelect us when that time comes. We don't like hearing things out in the community because it makes us look like that, you know, something that's not going on with us as a board. But we are trying to do our best, and we have to keep who is first and foremost on the top of the list, and that is our children. First and foremost is our children. So I just want to thank you all for taking your time to bear with us. I know that we do have people out there in TV land that's at home watching us as well. So, yes, so I want to acknowledge those ones, too. And then also, I was given something by Mr. Key in here, something that you want us to...
Yeah, you can do an announcement.
Yes, okay. So it's from St. Mark's Zion Church, located at 4200 Alder Street. You are seeking permission to use the parking lot of Washington Elementary School, which you did acknowledge that it is kind of late, but you want the schedule is for Wednesday, July the 2nd, right? From 1 to 3? Okay, so we'll see about trying to get you some kind of answer before that time comes, okay? Okay, then. So I just want to thank everybody. Dr. Bornet, is there anything that you want to say?
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. So now, the next date and time of our meeting is July 8th, here at the Administration Building, okay? July 8th, at the Administration Building. Not at your place, Graylin, but at the Administration Building now. And so now, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, real call, please.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes, yes.
Oh, Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Okay, that's it. Yes. So, don't leave. I got to, oh, I got to talk to you now, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I won't be there tomorrow.
You know they will.